Call the Planning Commission for May 17, 2012 to order, please. May I get a roll call of members?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Ellen Becknam is absent this evening. Monica Duran.
Here.
Tracy Gildner.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Tims.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 3, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Okay, that motion passes with Commissioner Brinkman abstaining. And Commissioner Tims, you have to vote on the far-left one there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public forum, time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Staff, do we have anyone signed up for that? No. Okay. So this time we'll go into the public hearing. We have two cases tonight, a little bit of process and procedure. What we'll do is we'll have a presentation from staff, followed by questions and answers between the commissioners and staff. After that, we'll invite the applicant to come forward to address the commission with any additional information for their presentation, followed by question and answers from the commission. After that, anyone from the public may speak in favor or against this request, and we'd ask that they come up to the podium for that process. So at this time, first case, case number WZ-12-03, an application filed Patrick Nichols and Associates for approval of a zone change from residential 2 to mixed-use neighborhood for property located at 4695 Wadsworth Boulevard. And with that, staff, feel free to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recuse myself in this case for the following reasons. One, I've worked on the project previously with my business, with the applicants, and two, the applicants are my neighbors.
Thank you for that information. Any discussion from the commissioners?
I'll second it.
Great, thank you.
Just one item of note, we've been having problems with the speaker system, so make sure people, even those of you who come up and speak at the podium, speak directly into the mic, so we can get it all on record.
Thank you.
So with that, for the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and with me at the staff table is Lauren Micalack, who might answer questions. She's actually here for the zoning code amendment next, but she is available to speak as well. Before I get started with my presentation, I do have a letter that was submitted subsequent to the Planning Commission packet going out. So if you want to take a minute to look at that, feel free, please. There's screens on the line. I'll go ahead and give my prefacing remarks. This is case number WZ-12-03, not 11, as it shows on the screen, which is a request for a zone change from residential 2 to mixed-use neighborhood at 4695 Wadsworth. The owner of the property is Greenspring Baptist Church Fellowship out of Santa Rosa, California. Approximate area of the site is about 12,500 square feet. The comprehensive plan designates primary commercial corridor and neighborhood buffer area. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore, commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. The aerial shown on the screen is a copy of a 2010 aerial within our GIS system. The subject property is outlined in light blue. It is at the southeast-southwest corner of 47th and Wadsworth Boulevard, and is currently zoned R2, which allows primarily single and two-family residential dwellings. Again, it's about 12,500 square feet, and has on it two-story residence originally built in 1947. Access to the lot originally appeared like it came from Wadsworth Boulevard. There is a split-rail fence that was erected to eliminate the availability of this access. An unimproved driveway serves the property from West 47th Avenue, which is located just to the north of the existing structure on the property, and you can see, you'll be able to see in the pictures when I go through those. And then the remainder of the lot consists of turf with some mature trees on the west and southern sides. The existing structure and the property in general is in a state of disrepair and has had a history of noncompliance, not only to the building code, but also the nuisance codes and permit requirements. And like I say, we have, here at the city, been dealing with them many times over the last 10 years, dealing with code violations. This, in a larger context, again, is the 2010 aerial with the zoning overlay. You can see that it looks somewhat like a patchwork quilt. The property, again, is outlined in light blue, and we've got Wadsworth, which runs up its, the east side of the property, with 47th Avenue at the north. As everybody is aware, Wadsworth is one of the major commercial corridors within the metropolitan area, and can carry up to about 50,000 cars per day. The surrounding properties include a variety of land uses and zoning designations that reflect not only the residential roots of the city, but also some of the more recent commercial transitions to the north and west in sort of the, I guess I would call that a yellowish-green color. Our property is zoned R2, that includes primarily single-family residential dwellings. To the south is a parcel zoned R3 that has a single-family structure on it. Further to the south, when you get down Wadsworth a bit, we've got some RC and NC zoning. The RC piece has the Arapahoe House Detoxification Center on it, and the NC piece has got an office building. If we go across Wadsworth, we've also got somewhat of a hodgepodge of zoning and land uses. Sort of catty corner to the northeast is a piece of RC zoning that has a three-story office building on it. And then sort of a mix, here's a single-family piece, here's a commercial piece, here's a single-family piece. The applicants currently own and operate the business Mod Mood and Retro Consignment, which is located at 7,700 West 44th in the city. They specialize in mid-century modern design furnishings and decor, and one of the services they do provide are design services for both commercial and residential customers. The intent of this zone change is for the applicants, who have a contract on the property, to go ahead and purchase it and transfer their design functions over to this new residence. In addition to their services, they also sort of believe in that whole mid-modern century of, I want to say fab, but it's, the trend that's going on now, which Wheat Ridge has so many great examples, and this is one of them. So the architecture of the existing home kind of fits within their whole design idea and reflects that. The design center would initially serve clients by appointment only, which would minimize traffic impacts to the area. So now let's take a look at some of the slides of the property. The first one, I took, this is standing on the north side of the property, looking into it from 47th Avenue to the south. So you can see, it has kind of an odd layout on the lot, it's not a square building. Again, this is taken from 47th Avenue, just to give you a little bit different context. You can see Wadsworth over on the left-hand side of the image. This is looking south on Wadsworth, and again, the structure we're discussing is off to the right-hand side. This is looking north on Wadsworth. This is taken from across the street at one of the commercial properties, and you can see more of that Wadsworth frontage and the way the structure configured on the property. And then this is looking west on 47th Avenue. So I need to talk a little bit about our mixed-use zoning. As commissioners are aware, in September of 2010, City Council adopted our new mixed-use zoning categories, and the intent for adoption of the four different mixed-use zoning categories was to provide a clear, predictable, and streamlined development process, which establishes general design guidelines, parameters, allowed uses, and so on, without providing the site-plan level of detail that you have gotten accustomed to seeing through a plan development process. And then once a property would get rezoned to one of these mixed-use categories, the rest of the review process would essentially be administrative by staff. The MUN is one of those districts that was approved by City Council, and the way it is described in the zoning code is that it's appropriate along neighborhood streets and at neighborhood commercial centers, and that it was established to encourage medium-density mixed-use development, but to allow for a more limited range of neighborhoods serving commercial and retail uses, and it also includes residential, including single-family residential. The zone change to the MUN district would be the first step for approval of adaptive reuse of this site. If approved and prior to construction, a site development plan will be required, which of course would be an administrative review, and then they would proceed to building permit for construction if all of this takes place. So talking just a little bit about the MUN zone category, I know we've looked at several of the different MU, mixed-use commercial zonings in the past couple of weeks. We had an MUC, the last Planning Commission meeting, we had an MU, a mixed-use commercial TOD up near the proposed light rail, or the commuter station. This one looks a little bit different in that it's got some additional design guidelines built in. In the MUC districts, there really is a pretty generous height restriction. I believe it's six stories for a single-use building and eight stories for a mixed-use building. In this particular zone district, the building height requirements are limited to 35 feet for residential and 50 feet for all other buildings, because the intent is that it would be more of a transitionary zone between maybe a buffer area providing, for a buffer area next to maybe, say, Wadsworth, and then the lower-density residential neighborhood adjacent to it. So the intent is that it is a less invasive zoning with smaller height allowances, and so on and so forth. Now, as far as the uses go, if you look at the use table I've got up here on the screen, you can see that multifamily is permitted, so is single-family residential and duplexes. It does allow some various types of commercial uses. Anything with a drive-through, such as a bank or a gas station, would be a conditional use. Outdoor storage is not permitted. In this situation, they would be using some of the area for display, which we consider different from outdoor storage, and we do allow retail sales up to 20,000 square feet permitted. Now, once again, because we're looking more at the form of the zoning, the more intensive, the bigger the building, the more land area you need. This is a fairly small parcel. The intent behind it is to leave that existing structure, rehab the inside of it, but to keep basically the shell and to upgrade for the commercial use. So next, I would like to talk a little bit about the guiding documents. In 2005, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy was adopted, and this was a document that the city adopted, and the intent behind it was that we were to become a community of choice. It established goals for Wheat Ridge to be competitive with adjacent jurisdictions by upgrading the housing stock, targeting underutilized commercial properties for redevelopment, and specifically, one of the goals was for redevelopment of the Wadsworth Corridor. In response to the NRS, the Wadsworth Corridor Subarea Plan was adopted in 2007, and this is an excerpt from the land use map shown in the Wadsworth Corridor Study. The property in question, of course, is shown in this red area right here, which designates it as commercial. Other identified goals being met by this application would be to create an attractive, welcoming front door to Wheat Ridge, to encourage a gradual increase in density closer to Wadsworth, to facilitate future expansion of Wadsworth by CDOT, improve the streetscape appearance and pedestrian connections, and then finally, to encourage expansion of several or of existing businesses in the city. The next thing we're going to take a look at is Envision Wheat Ridge, which is the city's comprehensive plan adopted in 2009. Again, to help orient you, of course, north is to the top. This is Wadsworth in this location. We've got 44th down here with the pink dots, and the subject site is right here. It is being shown as being within a neighborhood buffer area, which is a little bit hard to see, but you can see it peeking out right here in this area. And then also on the edge of a commercial corridor, which is sort of the red bubbly areas. The intent of the neighborhood buffer designation is for buffering and transition between low-density residential areas and higher-intensity commercial corridors, and an identified goal of the designation is to encourage investment and redevelopment of underutilized properties. So the primary commercial corridor obviously relates to Wadsworth. Again, it's one of the major north-south arterials within the metropolitan area. I think at this location, it carries about 41,000 vehicle trips per day, but it can be as high as 50,000. And again, is a key target for redevelopment of outdated and underutilized properties. Again, other goals identified in Envision Wheat Ridge, which this application would be complying with, would be to attract quality retail development and actively retain existing retailers, to revitalize key redevelopment areas with quality design, to create recognizable gateways, and to establish a resilient and sustainable tax space. There was a neighborhood meeting held on February 7. We had four folks from the neighborhood in attendance, and a variety of discussion items, traffic obviously being one of the primary, parking, the nature of the business, and the proposed improvements to the site, and the Wadsworth frontage. Agency referrals. All agencies can provide service to the property with upgrades. CDOT indicated that upon commercial conversion, that there would be no access to Wadsworth. Xcel Energy can serve, they have no objections to the application. Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District will review site plan for access water supply and the need for hydrant at the time of site plan. Wheat Ridge Sanitation conserve with upgrades. Wheat Ridge Economic Development supports the zone change request. Police, no concerns with traffic or crime. And finally, Wheat Ridge Public Works, they are requiring a 30-foot right-of-way reservation work for Wadsworth, and installation of a six-foot streetscape buffer and a six-foot sidewalk along Wadsworth, and that they will also, for drainage accommodations, require installation of curb and gutter along 47th Avenue, and that they will view, review specific drainage and traffic plans at the time of site plan approval, or site plan request. So since this is a zone change, we are required to look at the evaluation criteria that are specified in Chapter 26, and we've drawn the following conclusions. Number one, the property is currently underutilized and unmaintained, and there will be benefits to the city if it's redeveloped. There should be economic benefits if there are retail sales tax that we can collect based on the rezoning. And there'd also be physical benefits to the property, which is currently an ISO, and obviously it'll be improved and maintained. There will be new sidewalk required to be installed along Wadsworth, which will provide a benefit to pedestrians. We've concluded that there's changing conditions due to the intensification of traffic on Wadsworth, and that the property is probably no longer desirable for low-density residential use. I think that's pretty evident in the fact that we've had all the code violation problems and maintenance problems with the property. I've concluded that there's consistency with the guiding documents, specifically the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, the Wadsworth Corridor Subarea Plan, and then of course, Envision Wheat Ridge, the city's comp plan. We've concluded that, again, it's questionable whether the property is desirable for residential use, given the noise and traffic that are generated by Wadsworth, and that the MU zoning will provide a land-use transition from Wadsworth, which is the heavy commercial corridor, to the lower-density neighborhood to the west. All agencies can serve the property with upgrades installed at the developer's expense, and that finally, traffic and drainage will be assessed at the site plan stage. Staff is giving a recommendation with no conditions. And that concludes the comments, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. We'll begin the questions. Commissioner Duran, any questions? Yes.
Can you tell me how many parking spaces will it accommodate there?
The plans we've looked at, which have been fairly preliminary, it looks like there's about room for six or seven. And again, you know, we don't really have a site plan to show you for the property, but if you looked at the slides that I was showing, there is, if the zone change goes through and they do the reuse, there is, they will have access from 47th Avenue into this parking lot. That is currently really informal, I think maybe defined with pavers, but it'll be expanded to meet commercial standards.
Okay. Can you also tell me what is behind the existing building? Is there some rental property behind there?
When you say behind, what do you mean?
Behind the structure that they want to remodel there.
Well, here's the subject property, 47th Avenue at the top, Wadsworth on the eastern side. This is a single-family residence here. This is also a single-family residence. You can kind of see the outline of the structure, and the rest of the area on the property is yard space.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkman?
Hi, Meredith. Yikes. Can you go back to the pictures of the property on the 47th? Yes. So I'm all about curb and gutter, but I'm not about islands of curb and gutter.
Okay.
It seems wasteful to put it there when there's nothing else to the west of it. Is there a particular reason? And the same question goes for the sidewalk. It'll be an island of sidewalk.
Well, let's address the sidewalk first of all. Is this the one? No.
Again, I'm all about safety, but...
If you look at this picture, that's on the screen, Wadsworth is over to the side, and there's no sidewalk, but look at the path people have created.
Okay.
So the intent with Public Works's condition is that there's existing curb line right here, so there'd be a six-foot section, or a six-foot wide strip of landscaping, and then a six-foot wide sidewalk, that, albeit it might connect to nowhere right now, but it's better than having people walk next to the curb line on Wadsworth.
Okay, that's the sidewalk?
So there's the sidewalk. Again, you can see that the curb, curbing comes around the radius of the corner, so what Public Works is recommending, that it be extended to the western limit of the property, partially for drainage. They will have to do some accommodation of the drainage. I believe that this corner is where the pond is probably going to be, and they believe it would be more functional to have the curb and gutter in, and provide a hard line for, if there is street parking, to have some sort of defined edge.
Okay. And then the last thing, hydrant locations. I was remiss when I drove around, I wasn't paying attention to hydrants. Would it be the property owner's responsibility to put in a hydrant?
If there is one required by the fire district, it would be the property owner's expense.
Can you explain why? Is that just the way it is?
That's the standard requirement for any sort of commercial development. I'm not saying they're going to absolutely have to put one in, but they will do a further assessment as we get a little bit further along in the process.
Okay. And then one last question. We had in our packet a letter from somebody who referred to a hearing and a court of appeals, and the fact that we, suggesting that we can't even hear this case. Can you...
Jeff would disagree with that. What that letter is referring to are protective covenants, which were in place, put in place in the 40s, that restricted the property to residential use. And back in the 70s, there was a lawsuit filed that was upheld in district court defending the covenants. Now, the city is not in the position of enforcing covenants, and so it's not something that we're concerned with. As far as I'm aware, in order to bring some sort of suit against the proposed property owner and the development, they would need all those property owners, and I know there's over 100 to agree to it, and really, we have one person who... I have a copy of the lawsuit in my packet, and it's from the 70s.
So it was visited, it was reviewed and visited as part of this?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you for now.
Commissioner Matthews?
Not at this time. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Gildner, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. It says that they're going to widen Wadsworth in 2020. Now, what will that take out of widening in that, when they take quite a bit of that property?
Well, and at some point, we all hope Wadsworth will be widened, and that's part of the reason we did the Wadsworth Corridor Subarea Plan. The section for Wadsworth, which is currently at about 90 feet, would be at 150, which is why Public Works is requesting a reservation. Quite frankly, CDOT has no money. We have to go through an EA process. It's not on anybody's hit list for any sort of federal or state funding, and we hope it happens in our lifetime. So I don't know where the gentleman got the 2020 date, but I think that's erroneous.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weaver?
Just looking at this picture, how close is the edge of the building to the curb?
It is pretty darn close. I know, I don't have that exact footage, but with the 35-foot, 30-foot reservation, it comes pretty close to that front.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for staff regarding that potential lawsuit. Wheat Ridge is a home rule municipality, right? So zoning is a police power afforded, so that should be okay. Does the Building Department review this type of application at this stage?
The Building Department has spent so much time out there that, it's not funny, they've had a lot of issues with housing complaints. I know there was a fire in the structure at one point, so they've been working pretty closely with the applicant in looking at that, and I know, I believe they're fairly familiar with what is going to be required for them to do this.
The change occupancies from residential to commercial, okay. And then on the neighborhood meeting notes that were done back in February, there was a question, will any people be living here, basically, and there wasn't an answer to that? I'm just...
Well, you know, we've, the owners have tossed around several ideas. At one point, they thought about having perhaps an upper-story ancillary residence. I don't know if that is still in the plans. I don't think it is, but I... I don't think it is, but I defer to them.
But the zoning would allow both the design center...
It would allow both residential and commercial, yes.
And then my final question is, also in a couple of the letters that were included in our packet, there was some reference to previous attempts to rezone this property in the past? Is that, do you have any recollection of that?
Again, that's a little bit taken out of context. Back in the mid-2000s, the then-property owner tried to come in, or came into the city to get a variance to, because, kind of a long story, they don't quite meet the 12,500 square feet required in R2. You probably remember this. So, they came in and asked for a variance to allow a lot-size variance, which was denied. They then were able to obtain a quitclaim from CDOT for a two-foot strip along Wadsworth that was added to the property, but they never went through with the conversion to, officially conversion to resident, or the two-family dwelling. So, I think that it's kind of a misuse of terms.
Okay. That's good, thank you. No further questions. Any other questions for staff? Yes.
Looking downstream, after this business succeeds, wildly succeeds and moves on, the use for this property, what do you see it as? I hope not gas station. I hope not bank with drive-through. I mean, none of those are applicable, correct?
Well, for one thing, they've got such a limited lot size that I don't think you could accommodate anything with a drive-through. A gas station would be a really bad idea, because this is right at the crest of the hill of Wadsworth, and I think we would look unfavorably about that kind of traffic.
Okay.
But, yeah, the site by itself being so small really restricts what can happen. It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Weber?
I just have one more about the parking. The parking would be off the street.
Yes.
It's not the street parking.
No.
It's in this area.
Yeah. Anytime we have a new commercial use, they are required to provide off-street parking. That doesn't limit them from parking in the street, but it is supposed to be contained on-site.
They provide it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's all for now. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call the applicant forward, please. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm one of the applicants. Jeanne Nichols, 3863 Allison Circle, Wheat Ridge.
My name is Patrick Gooch. I also reside at 3863 Allison Circle in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything to staff's presentation?
The only thing I'd probably like to assure the city of, and I think our current business is evidence of our commitment to Wheat Ridge as a whole. My husband and I moved here five years ago. He actually worked for Handy Dan back over in the Safeway Shopping Center many years ago, and owned a business called Movie Merchants over in the Applejack Shopping Center many years before that, so we're kind of coming home here. We did try to purchase the building initially, before we bought the old Grau building that we're currently in, because of our love for the architecture of that particular building, and we couldn't come to any agreement with the owners at the time. And then we bought the building we're currently in. We received a very, well, it was the largest federal grant for, what's it called? The Jefferson County, for building improvement, and there was discussion for us to tear down the greenhouses. And we feel that we're kind of committed to, again, the city, and we feel like as the carnation capital and as part of the historic value, we enveloped that into our overall business plan. When this building came up for sale again, the last thing we needed was another building, but we're in absolute terror that someone's going to tear down that building, and we just think it's a beautiful building and a great opportunity to be a wonderful entrance into the city of Wheat Ridge from Wadsworth. So, me being the designer and artistic one of our family, we really wanted the building. It doesn't make sense for us to buy the building for residential purposes, because, as you can all imagine, and why they haven't been able to get any good tenants in, is the traffic is, you know, difficult and lotta lotta. So, my husband, who is much more business-oriented, said the only way that it made sense was for us to zone it, and so that we could function out of that. And our design business, fortunately for Wheat Ridge, and we're very proud to, once again, have done, we feel the right thing for Wheat Ridge in bringing our business here. We had a lot of pressure to move our concept downtown and on Broadway and in those areas, and people ask us constantly why Wheat Ridge, and we say, "Why not?" It's a great community. We get a lot of business from the Highlands and Boulder and Golden, and we service this area. Unfortunately, our design business has grown tremendously, and we are kind of, I'm landlocked, if you can believe it or not, in that other building. And so, that was our thought, that with that building, we could keep it looking like a home and do our design business out of that. And our children work in the business with us, my daughter and our son-in-law, and so long-term there, unless something wildly unforeseen happens, you know, we have no, we're not outsiders coming in trying to get it rezoned under the pretext of, you know, something that it's not going to be. Our goal is to do what we say we're going to do with it and keep it that way. So, you know, that's our request. We got into it, and we didn't understand about all the curbing and sidewalks, and we already have quite a bit of expense going in it, but we feel like it's a great asset for the city, and we feel like we're real advocates for the city and would love the opportunity to do that. So, that's my two cents worth.
Well, one of our beliefs is that we recycle and we save, and we have a whole generation of green people coming in and out of our store. We're the ultimate recycler. We take artifacts from the good old days, and we recycle it into the better days now, hopefully, in the future for this generation. They're the ones that have had this vision to save and reuse and recycle, and, you know, they brought it, our generation dragging and screaming the whole way, until maybe the last five or 10 years, where we've all kind of gotten on the bandwagon, and Jeanne and I have in a big way. And that building has really spoken to us, and in a way that, you know, we are willing to take our assets, our money, our future, and put it into what I think is, could be a nice image part of the city, coming from the north into the city. One day, in those good old days, back in '47, that probably was the nicest home in Wheat Ridge. Well, Wheat Ridge didn't exist then, I guess, but it certainly does now, and we feel that we wouldn't want to be in a better place. And business is good for us. We think we've done an admirable job, and we get that reinforcement locally, regionally, and even nationally on what we've done with the building on West 44th. And we're not a fly-by-night operation. We live here, we work here, we work seven days a week, and, you know, we're proud to do that. And I wouldn't recommend it for other people's retirement, but for us, it seems to fit. I do have an addition of a small, little drawing, and I didn't realize the parking issue would come up, but I only have one copy. I'd be glad to pass it down. It's a little hard to see. This has six. The seventh one would be in the east, but anyway, you can kind of see where the parking is. We have been kind of amazed at all of the additional improvements we do or are required to make. Obviously, those are real dollars from real people, and I was kind of surprised that the city didn't partner with you on some of those things. But nonetheless, we are still willing to put our capital at work, to make this city more beautiful, to make our future more secure as well. We feel it's an investment. It's an investment in safety. It's an investment in the aesthetics of the city, and we have not had an engineering report on the building, and we are trying not to spend more money until we find out that we actually are going to secure the building. So, kind of with that said, I'd be glad to answer any and all questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Brinkman?
Where do you plan on storing the modern shed?
Well, the modern sheds is not just a shed. It's a line of sheds. It's a line of outdoor products that are more dwellings than sheds. I don't think we have decided how best to merchandise that product in the best way I know, that, you know, if you ask five people, you'll have probably five different answers. At one time, we were contemplating putting one, and I will pass this off. We were contemplating on elevating it, and that would be subject to engineering, and we do not have an engineer report to place that, but we foresee, you know, creating just a spectacular building there, like we have placed a spectacular building, we feel, on 44th.
Jeanne, do you have something?
One of the concepts that we have, because modern shed or modern dwelling, as it's now being called, and we are the dealer for Colorado, was to take a portion of the backyard and actually install these as, because what they're used for is like yoga studios or offices or little granny flats, as they use the term in Arbatia, and eventually, you know, kind of build a couple of little communities connected with decks and things to show how it can be used. That's not a small investment, and it's not an investment we're going to be making right now. The current modern shed that we have is on a, built on a trailer, so that we can take it to trade shows in Grand Junction or Durango or whatever. So, I would, it's not going to be sitting right out in the front of the building, obscuring the architecture of the building, if that's kind of the question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes, I have one comment and one question. The comment is a shameless promotion for the Wheat Ridge Business District. The grant that your current business got was from the Wheat Ridge Business District, and it was a Community Development Block grant. The other question I have is, back in 1985, my office was actually 4,800 Wadsworth, and from my office window, I could see that property. And at least from 1985 till now, I don't think there's been any consistent use of that. Occasionally, there would be some activity that would look like there's some maintenance being performed, but to the best of your knowledge, has there been any consistent activity at that building since at least 1985?
Are you talking about the 4695 Wadsworth?
Yes, sir.
Building? I do not know what the history of the maintenance has been on that building.
But we know that in the last couple of years, and we do know the owner, the Green Springs, and since they've owned it, which I don't know how long that is, they've had a really tough time keeping any kind of tenants long-term in that space.
And that was another puzzling thing to me, that apparently it's owned by a church, but the church was paying property taxes on it. It wasn't being treated as exempt property, which was kind of strange.
Again, I don't know the history of that, how they acquired the property, but they apparently tried to sell the property many times, and, you know, it comes down to, do you want to raise a family 15 feet from Wadsworth Boulevard?
And about that grant that you said, Wheat Ridge 2020 and the Wheat Ridge Business District were very instrumental in helping us acquire that. So, I'm sorry if I slighted you on that, because we love Wheat Ridge 2020 and the Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Additional questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
So, this time, I do have a couple of people signed up to speak. If you would, when I call your name, you're certainly, if you would like to speak in favor or against a request, please approach the podium. If you would feel like you have no comment, just let us know. You don't have to come forward for that. Tim Turner?
No comment.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, there's a question mark. Gloria Wright?
No comment.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or last-minute questions for staff regarding this particular application?
I do have a question, Meredith. Regardless of the action tonight, when is this scheduled for City Council? Do you know?
I think it's July night for public hearing. There's proceeding that has been discussed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So, with no further discussions, we can entertain a motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-12-03, a request for approval of the zone change from residential two to mixed-use neighborhood for the property located at 4695 Wadsworth Boulevard for the following reasons. One, the property is not desirable for low-density residential use due to the adjacency of Wadsworth Boulevard. Two, the proposed zoning change and reuse of the existing structure will provide a land-use transition between Wadsworth and the neighborhood to the west. And three, the evaluation criteria support approval of this request.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion among the commissioners?
I have one comment. Staff, I would ask, normally I don't ask this, but I would ask that, could you get back to the people who, very kindly, the homeowners, who wrote letters, and there's a couple of them in here, who wrote letters opposing this and kind of explaining, because there was some erroneous information on some of the letters and some assumptions on some of the letters, and I'd like the homeowners to embrace this, but you can't embrace it without the right information, and they may not be watching this tonight. So, is it possible that you could, either the property owners or soon-to-be property owners or staff reach back out to these specific people and just kind of address some of their concerns?
I had a very lengthy conversation with Patricia Fisher yesterday, who wrote two of the letters.
Yes.
And quite honestly...
Her mood's not going to change?
Pardon me?
Is her mood going to change?
No.
Okay.
It's not. I am interested to talk to Mr. Frattonelli, who wrote the letter in favor and then against, so I'm not sure why.
So, I'm not sure why. I probably will call him. I'm not sure. I will call Ms. Fisher again.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks. Just wanted to ask.
Any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Matthews?
Yes, I am going to support this, because basically, having observed that property over the last 25 years, any use of this property that will be consistent and provide maintenance will be an improvement to the neighborhood and not a detriment to the neighborhood. So, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? As chair, I do want to also state that, you know, I've driven by this property many times and have noticed it and questioned in my own mind that residential, in my opinion, isn't the best use, certainly along Wadsworth as it continues to get busier and worldwide in some time in the future. I also appreciate the applicant's investment in the city already and look forward to seeing this property transformed. So, I will be fully supporting this application. With that, I will call for a vote.
I'm missing, oh, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for your attendance, and we do have one more case tonight, so you're certainly welcome to stay, or if you do decide to leave, just, if you would, just exit quietly on your way out. Thank you very much. Our next case is case number ZOA-12-01, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to Planned Development District Regulations. And we'll welcome a presentation from staff.
I would like someone to retrieve Commissioner Ohm.
That's, yeah, thank you. The record reflect that Commissioner Ohm is returning.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Miklak with the Community Development Department, and I'm here to present case number ZOA-12-01, Proposed Code Amendment Concerning Planned Developments and Private Zone Changes. I would like to enter into the record the case file, the draft ordinance, and the contents of this digital presentation. I'd also like to document that all public noticing requirements for this hearing have been met. I have the pleasure of presenting the more dry presentation tonight. I'll try and keep it moving. Plan developments can be a little bit complicated, so I really want to start with a little bit of context, and I know this seems rudimentary, but essentially, in our zoning code, we have two types of zone districts. So, we have what we commonly refer to as straight zone districts, so residential one, commercial one, light industrial, those prescriptive zone districts that have uses and development standards established in the zoning code. And we have 21 of those straight zone districts in the city. The other type that we have are the planned development districts, and the code establishes five different PD zone districts based on the predominant land use, so planned residential, planned commercial, et cetera. Those five are listed on this slide. And fundamentally, a planned development is an area of land that is typically under unified ownership, and it's developed based on an official-approved site development plan. Plan developments usually entail some sort of a unique scenario, which is why they're not put under a straight, developed under a straight zone district, and the PD zoning really provides more flexibility for the developer. So, the two sections of the code that relate to these straight zone changes and planned development zone changes are what we are proposing to repeal and reenact tonight. Just a little bit of history, the modifications that we're looking at right now are really an extension of an amendment that started in, that was approved in 2007, so five years ago. And at that time, we established a two-step option for approving planned developments. And it also added, at that time, some more administrative approvals. In the five years since then, we've had the opportunity to use those regulations, and we've also identified a few areas for improvement. So, we're not changing what we did last then. We're sort of building upon the amendments that we did in 2007. As the commission is aware, in the intervening time, we've also adopted mixed-use zone districts. They fall under our straight zoning classification. And those districts give developers and property owners more options for zoning and commercial development and really reduce the dependence on planned developments. They're not going to go away altogether, though, so we really want to take this opportunity to improve our PD code and process. The central goals, the three central goals are listed on this slide, and really, the impetus for this amendment that we're discussing tonight is to refine that two-step process that we created 2007. So, currently, the outline and specific development plans are both treated as zone changes. If you approve them in a two-step process, both steps are zone changes. And that means they're both approved by ordinance, they're both subject to a legal protest, and both are reviewed against the set of criteria that are really intended for zone changes, not so much for assessing site development. So, separating those two components of a PD, the zoning and the design, is the first goal of our amendments into separate documents, also into separate processes, separate criteria. In establishing that separate process, we want to make sure it's logical and predictable. And ultimately, when you start a project in the zoning code, tends to get a little bit bigger in scope. So, the reason that we're repealing it is that we did some cleanup just to reorganize that Article III planned development regs and to make it more clear to us and to any reader or citizen. So, quickly, this table looks like what you received in your packet, and it's summarizing this refined two-step process. So, we'll walk through that bottom table real quickly. That first step, the first component, is the outline development plan, and it's the component that establishes the planned development zone district. It establishes permitted uses, underlying development standards, and it will provide a really conceptual idea of what's being planned for a site. That component, as it is today, will be approved as a zone change. So, that includes a neighborhood meeting, a hearing before the planning commission, your recommendation to council, a hearing at city council, the opportunity for a legal protest from citizens, and then that would be recorded. The second step is where we have the proposed change. That specific development plan will provide the site plans and building elevations, and these red circles really highlight the crux of the change. So, it's no longer a zone change, so no neighborhood meeting. And it will be approved by resolution, so that eliminates the legal protest. Again, there's a two-step option. So, if the specific development plan is submitted after the approval of the first step, planning commission will be the final authority. So, just one public hearing before you and it's over, an applicant could appeal to city council. But just one public hearing, if an applicant chooses to seek concurrent review of both the outline and specific plans, then city council would be the final authority on both. You'd make a recommendation for both those two components. The outline would be approved by ordinance, the specific by resolution. Let's see. When we met in study session with you guys in January, we had discussed a third step. Currently, we have the final development plan. It's approved administratively. It's very similar to our site development plan review. When we had a study session with city council, we were discussing some of the redundancies in our procedures, and that step between specific development plan and permitting is really pretty redundant. You're looking at the same components, and so that's why we've eliminated that step. There's proposed to be no intermediate review between the specific and the permit review process for an applicant. Quickly, this next slide is going to show you how the submittals are really not changing in the new ordinance. Our goal is to have each step progressively build, so again, separating that zoning and design components so that they're a little bit more discreet. Looking at the bottom table here, the outline development plan, which establishes the zoning, really dealing just with zoning issues, so uses, development standards, and then the site development information coming with the specific and then with our permit review process. No change really to what's being submitted, just subtle change to when we're seeing it. Told you this was dry. So, that's the biggest, that's the reason that we opened this can of worms, the review process. A couple of other things that we touched when we got in here, Article III, so that planned development regulations, we reorganized it, and that's why we're repealing and reenacting. We had two sort of revisions to the criteria. First, because we're creating a new process, creating a new set of criteria, it's more appropriate to use when looking at site development. And we also sort of tweaked just a little bit the rezoning, the zone change criteria. We discussed this a little bit in study session, but essentially, with just a couple changes, right now, the zone change criteria assume that an area has to be actively, has to already have changed to have a zone change approved, zone change request approved. And we know that a zone change is a tool that you can use to recognize an area that has already changed or is actively changing or is expected to change. So, we just tweaked our criteria to encompass those scenarios. Since we're changing the initial review process, we also want to look a little bit about how you address amendments. We've got two separate components, zoning and site design, and essentially, the amendment process will be a little bit easier. If you're mending your site design and you're within your zoning standards, then most amendments can be done administratively, which we think will be a lot easier for applicants. The community development director can refer an amendment that seems more significant to planning commission for review. That is every, those are the big topic items for Article III. As I mentioned, there's two sections of code that deal with zone changes. So, Section 26-112 is where we have the zone change procedure for those straight zone changes. There is no modification to that procedure or to those submittals. We're repealing and reenacting, again, with the purpose of providing some more clarity. So, again, you know, heading titles and reorganizing sections for readability. Same, in 112, we also updated the criteria, the zone change criteria. And finally, all references to planned developments were updated. You saw that in the draft ordinance. We did touch Chapter Two, which you guys don't normally see. Chapter Two in the city code is where the function of the planning commission is described, and we did some cleanup there. It refers to procedures that we don't have anymore, and it is updated to reflect the procedures that we have proposed. One last thing, when we met in study session in January, y'all recommended that we look at maybe a sunset clause for planned developments, and we took that recommendation and policy question to city council, and they did not think it was a good time to look at that right now. So, that is the reason that there's no sunset included in the draft ordinance. Just wanted to mention that as a follow-up, and I believe that's everything I have. Didn't do too bad, and how we haven't answered any questions. Of course, I left my draft over here.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions for staff?
What's a sunset clause?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, currently, when a planned development is approved but never built, it remains on the books, and it remains the underlying zoning. So, for example, if you wanted to build a car dealership, you had that planned development approved, and 20 years down the road, the car dealership didn't exist, that's still all you can do with that property. So, we had discussed the idea of maybe putting an expiration on that. It brings up the question of how long and what do you do afterwards? Do you revert it back automatically? Do you city-initiate rezone? It opened a whole new can of worms, and so that's why we didn't move that forward after the study session with council.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Commissioner Gilner, any questions? Commissioner Matthews? Okay. Commissioner Brickman?
I'm fascinated on why, if the ODP and specific development plan are submitted separately, planning commission is the final authority. But if they're submitted concurrently, city council will review. Is the, can you explain the logic in that?
Sure. So, the, I'll take the first step. So, in the two-step option, city council didn't feel like they needed to be the final authority. Once the zoning is in place, they felt like that was really their purview, and that's why we have this commission. In the instance, and they didn't want to add time or cost to the applicant, so having to go to city council can add a month to two months. In the instance that somebody goes concurrently, you can't stop, zoning has to be approved by city council. And so, essentially, they couldn't stop one component with you guys and have you approved a site development plan for something that hadn't gotten zoning approved yet. So, they felt it would just be easier to take it all through at once and end with them at the applicant's risk, knowing that they'd have to then show their site plan to council if they do it all together. Does that help?
Yeah, I don't mind the logic. I find it interesting that city council, especially on something big, and I'm thinking big, that they wouldn't want to see the specific development plan. I guess we don't have a lot of big out there anymore, so, and if they agreed, obviously, I'm not going to question their decision, but it just seems a little not like them.
Well, I think things have, the philosophy has changed a little bit, and I think they're actually kind of embracing you as a commission with more kind of trust. And, yeah, the zone change is a huge decision that should require their approval by ordinance, but they want to leave the kind of nitty-gritty design stuff up to you, which I think is...
Yep. And as we had discussed sort of with this, with the very first draft, essentially, if it's not approved by ordinance, then they don't have to, you know, who, anybody could approve it, right? So, we looked at, should staff be the approvers? And in that case, you know, if you go too administrative, then you end up with a really front-loaded application, because council has to see something, and, you know, how much public input is enough. And so, we felt like having the public hearing with planning commission got it a little bit less, you know, hearing-heavy, but still preserved that public input process.
It's, speaking of public input process, my other question was on the legal protest. So, I'm looking at page 21.
Sure.
So, there is still a legal protest available to neighbors?
For the zone change.
For the zone change.
And the reason, so the legal protest is in chapter, or it's actually in the city charter, and it's associated with any type of ordinance. So, because the zone change is approved by ordinance, the legal protest option automatically exists.
But we're removing the protest option or from the...
From the specific.
From the specific development.
By virtue of it no longer being approved by ordinance.
I get it.
There's no structure for a legal protest to exist if it's being approved by motion or resolution.
Okay. I just, I wanted you to elucidate that for viewers out there.
Quick question for, I had Lauren do a little bit more background, because we do have two new folks. Do you understand what a legal protest is as part of the approval? And what that is, is anytime it's an ordinance, like a zone change, if we have, usually with a property, you've got a radius, you've got property owners on all sides. So, what, the legal protest is a provision that 20% of the property owners on one side within 100 feet can file what's called a legal protest, which is usually just a letter saying they protest, and it requires a greater majority vote by council. So, on a regular zone change, it would be a simple majority, which would be five out of eight. But if a legal protest is filed, it makes it be a supermajority, which is six out of eight, which is, you know, it sounds like one vote, isn't that hard to get? It could make or break a zone change request. So, that's, that's what we have provisioned.
Thank you. I have one question that kind of piggybacks on Commissioner Brickman's. And in the past, we have had two separate processes, depending on the size of the development, that when it reaches a certain size, it changes the process, you know, kind of like the subdivision. If it's a minor subdivision, it just is planning commission. If it's major, it goes to city council. And I was surprised to see no division of the process into large and small projects.
So, the only threshold that we now, that we have for size, we haven't really changed it, but essentially, it's in 112 now, and if you're an acre or larger and you want to rezone to commercial, you have to go to a planned development. And if you're smaller, you can go to mixed-use, for example. But once you're either straight zone or planned development, you're treated equally, once you're in that category. But that one acre cut off... But that one acre cutoff is what determines if you have to go the planned development route. Does that, does that answer the question?
Thank you. Commissioner Drain, any questions? Okay. Commissioner Ohm? Okay. Any additional questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, staff. Normally, we would open the, uh, case to the public. I see no one in the audience to speak in favor or against, uh, this particular proposal, so we'll close that, uh, that public hearing. Any, uh, initial discussion from, uh, the commissioners on this ordinance? Seeing none, yes?
Nice work.
Uh, this time then I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending chapter 26 concerning the planned development district regulations and private zone changes and making certain amendments to chapter two in association here with exhibits one comparison table number two proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All right, I'll call for a vote, then.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, staff, for that, uh, that case. At this time, uh, any other items, any staff business?
We're, we, we always keep an ongoing list of code amendments that we process. Um, Lauren's been great, um, doing, she's working on site triangles, the planned developments. The next piece, um, that we're looking at, and Ms. Brinkman will be very happy about that, is sign code. So it's between that and the subdivision regulations, but we kind of felt that the sign code had a little bit more immediacy with some of the stuff, you know, we've got all this new technology with the, the spinners and the waivers and the LED, so that's going to be the next piece we bite off. Um, what were you thinking, timeframe again, remind me? We don't really have a timeframe. Um, you know, it's going to take some research and that kind of thing. Um, the other things is, uh, obviously, the architectural and site design manual relative to, uh, commercial, heavy commercial industrial, and then also, we're looking at doing modifications to industrial to be more of an employment type of zoning, um, and then, of course, 38th Avenue. I don't know if you want an update on that.
There is a new video on city websites that shows how easy back-end diagonal parking is, so you will love the video. You just posted it today.
Yeah, it's really, it's really cool.
Featuring...
Are you sending it to every sister?
Councilwoman Joyce J.
Yeah, featuring Joyce J, she, she's really great in it.
Yeah. Sarah Marys and Joyce drives. Um, another thing is, um, we have scheduled a review on the street ride and road ad. And this payment that gets a little longer, so...
I heard the, um, the renaming or the naming and the branding and the tagline and all that. The branding was done, but the tagline has not been decided yet?
There's still a work in progress.
Right? Okay.
Hey, I would just like to comment on some of the, uh, architectural design manuals that we have done, that, uh, when we do that, there's really nice pictures and everything, but you're always kind of wondering what that will look like in real life when it actually goes into practice. And my observation of the project at 44th and Wadsworth is that does produce an aesthetically pleasing, uh, building, uh, to, uh, go through that, uh, architectural design, and I'd like to see a similar high-quality, uh, process, uh, for the industrial.
Great, thank you. Any other, any other, uh, commission business? Okay.
Do we have a meeting on the 7th?
We'll know tomorrow with certainty if we do or not. It's, uh, the application from the Public Works Department regarding the Wheat Ridge Maintenance Facility. We had come through with the zone change, it got approved, so it's now zone public facilities, and they have to do a consolidation plot and a planned building group, so their resubmittal is due tomorrow, and at that point, we will gauge if the application is ready to come to planning commission.
The 7th is the yearly SIRS video that we are obligated to show you about, um, uh, public officials liability. Part of what we were, we did with Board of Adjustments was a dinner meeting that started at 6:00, so hopefully, people can make it. Um, we haven't decided. Anne's shaking her head no.
I'm going to plug this, um, shamelessly. Um, I have to meet and get my packet for the garden tour, the Wheat Ridge Garden Tour, which is happening on the Saturday of Father's Day weekend.
Okay.
So I'll be late.
The night change or...
Yeah, yeah, so I'll be late.
Are you...
Yes.
Joining?
Yes.
Oh, we get to see your bathroom remodeled then, too.
I want the plan issue, you.
Special, special guest, so...
You're great, thank you. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.